Good evening again, Mr. President and Council. I have a request today from the Capital Asset Improvement Fund in the amount of $1.2 million, breaking that down to professional services of $200,000 and repairs and maintenance at[21.02][21.02]$1 million. That's Fund 4976. Have some projects here on the list I'd like to share with you. Drove the county a while back with the property manager and surveyed all the properties with -- okay, I thought you were looking for it. Surveyed all the properties within the county, the assets within the county, and took an assessment of our needs for preservation, restoration, repairs of buildings from -- I wouldn't say anything would be minor, but -- and here's the list. One item was the barn, the storied barn at Lindwood on 600 North. That would be part of what we're requesting for if, unless, that's incorporated into the highway projects that will take place later on the new fueling station and all that. And if there's room for a storage barn or incorporate that storage into that facility, then that piece wouldn't be needed on the preservation of that pole barn. But we found when we went out there, there was post rot, things that was allowing actually the metal to come from off the building because of the purlings in the building and the posts in the building had some post rot and the posts and purlings is what you screw the metal into and had some metal that was coming off that. We may not be doing that, it just depends on how that's going to be incorporated into what will be done later at the Highway Department and if there's room for storage or a building or storage in a building in that project. Secondly, and I think quite important, is the historical Bronenberg Chapel at the Youth Center on the Bronenberg property. That chapel was built in 1924. It's, I won't say it's in horrible repair, but it needs repaired and it needs preserved and the restoration of that building would, I think, would be important to the county. The building was built in 1924 when the Bronenberg home was built, children's home was built. It was the chapel for the Bronenberg children's home. That building needs a new roof, the columns and the windows and the facade, the fascia and the front of the building that is painted, all needs preserved and painted. The inside of the building has had some roof leaks from the roof. The roof has been patched, I don't know that it's leaking right now, but it's, there's been some shingles replaced. If you drive by there, you can see them, they stand out like sort of, but so a new roof on that building and paint and update inside. That building could be used for a number of things. I have been in touch with Stephen Jackson from the Historical Society. He was kind enough to immediately call me back when I, when we were surveying that property and looked at the chapel and I gave him a call and I said, "Stephen, hey, do you have any clue when this building was built?" 1924, Rick, so it's 101 years old. So I called him back a few minutes later and said, "Hey, you know what kind of shingles was on that roof?" And he said, "I'll find out." He called me back a few minutes later and said, "I got a picture from 1939 and it was a shingled roof. It wasn't slate, it wasn't a, of course, a metal roof back then, but, or could have been a metal roof back then, but it was a shingled roof." So he was kind enough to chase down that information from us. But it's important to the history of this county that that building's preserved. It wouldn't be a huge amount of this money, but it's a very important spend. The bigger of the projects would be the Star Bank Building, the ramp to the parking garage, paint, there's some roof repairs that need made and we're, just today, they were testing the core samples drilled through the concrete to see what the structure was being, we're waiting on that report. Don't have that back yet, but that would be a larger of the repairs. You have the repairs that are now going on at MCCC, the drainage repairs they have going on right now. And then the highway, the highway property, fueling station and other plans out there at some point, the property's being acquired or has been, how far are we on that, acquiring the property? So there's a new fueling station, an upgraded fueling station required. Local Road and Street can pay for a lot of that, but that's highway dollars and there's a big portion of the county now that are driving vehicles that fuel at those stations and a percentage of that would be non-highway dollar-related fueling, so this fund should probably fund some of that. The clock tower, the bell tower on the top of the courthouse hasn't worked properly for years and probably hasn't worked for some time. That would be another project that would be in that. I could see, this is an in-house estimate, I wouldn't want to share any numbers until we send out for quotes publicly because you don't want your quoter to know what you're thinking an item might cost. But these items all together are somewhere in the $850,000 to $950,000 range, not including any engineer costs, I don't think those would be a large number. So we would be sending the ones out for bid that are over the threshold and would need the bid, would need a bid. I'd like to point out that we have, after the jail was built, about a, not counting roads, streets, drainages, that type of thing, about $160 million in assets that we need to maintain over time and this Capital Project Fund will be able to do that. If you remember, just a few years ago, we had to remediate the courthouse. We had no rainy day fund at that time, we had no capital project fund at that time. It took on about a $3.5 million debt to remediate the asbestos in the courthouse. All this can be done without any debt. We were thinking back in, we've discussed this a couple of times back at the end of the year about a Capital Asset Fund, so how do we do that? So last year, there was a little bit of discussion about that, Joe, you mentioned it in one meeting. That was our next project, was how do we do that? Because we paid off debt, we built a rainy day fund, we fully funded an $8 million police pension fund, we done all that with investment money, money that we received on the investments of the county. So I'm sitting at, well, somebody's going to hear on the council, at the AIC Newly Elected Officials Training. So I broke out to a treasurer's training session and in that treasurer's training session, they started talking about investments. And until that day, I didn't realize it was possible, but on that day, in that treasurer's breakout, it was mentioned that the county commissioners are responsible to direct through the Investment Board or the Finance Board of the county where that interest goes. So I asked questions afterward of the State Board of Accounts, called Ricky Hofer from the State Board of Accounts at a later date and said, "How can we do this? How can we set it up?" Because here's our choices. A Cume Capital Fund, which you can do, we can set up a Cume Capital Fund, but it takes an additional tax rate outside the levy. And I don't know if anybody wants to do that, the three commissioners, I'm certain, do not want to do that. So how do we do it? So the other choice is to set up a Capital Asset Fund. We named it Capital Asset Improvement Fund and fund it by investments because you can't set up a fund unless you have a revenue source. And the only revenue source that we had was our investments, since those investments had been going to the general fund over the last several years and then we would move them to the rainy day fund or we would pay, we got an appropriation, if you remember, I don't remember if it was late last year, but $7.25 million for the police pension fund, $5 million from the general fund, investment money earned and $3 million from the public safety fund. And that ended up being $7.25 million, four and three quarter ended up coming out of the general fund and $3 million out of the public safety fund and we fully funded that budget. And at that time, that saved the county $1.1 million a year. So we took, we took $7.25 million and we paid that off and saved ourselves because of the interest rate on that retirement fund was 6.5% at that time. So if you look back at the debt, we paid off this when interest rates were low, interest rates were 2%, 3%, but we were getting 1% at the bank. So we were paying off debt in the beginning, but once our interest that we earned on our dollar that we placed in the bank become higher than what we were, than what we were paying on our loans, we went the other way and started saving that money and investing that money. We didn't get a, the remediation loan didn't get paid off during that time. The one bondholder, which was a bank, didn't want to let us pay it off even though they were the only bondholder, but thankfully rates started going up and they had us in a loan that was less than we were earning from them when we put our money in the bank. They probably wished they had to let us pay it off now, but anyhow, so we paid off that pension plan. All that was done through interest. And so what I'm asking today is that we take money that would have been going into the rainy day fund or spent in some other manner and put it toward the assets of the county, which totaled about $160 million. The Board of Finance on 121 amended their investment policy to include directing that money to the Capital Project Fund and the commissioners passed the ordinance setting up that fund in the meeting right after that. So I know there's some questions about whether or not the commissioners have the authority to do that. We believe we do. The policy rationale for this whole thing is directing interest to the Capital Improvement Fund aligns with prudent financial management, allowing counties to fund infrastructure and long-term projects without an additional tax burden. That Cume Capital Fund that we do not want to go to. The flexibility under 5139CA is designed to accommodate such local priorities provided statutory exceptions are respected. So the county commissioner's position on that particular fund is the County Board of Finance pursuant to 51371 has the authority under IC 51396A to direct interest from county investments, excluding those governed by specific subsections to the Capital Improvement Fund. So that's our request today and that's the best explanation I can give you today. I'm happy to answer questions if I can.
So, Rick, you were just citing IC Code 51396, correct? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, so I have it in front of me and it says, "All investments derived from an investment by political subdivision or by any other political, local public officer under the authority granted by Section 3 of this chapter shall be deposited, except as otherwise provided by law, in the general fund of the investment authority or in any other fund its governing body design specifically or by rule, subject to the modifications and limitations of this section."
Sure.
So when you go on to read the chapter, it talks about, it's not important, it talks about, in C, it talks about how the county treasurer has the, is authorized by the Board of County Commissioners, may invest tax collections and so forth. But then in D, it says, "The interest received on the investment made under the subsection C shall be receipted through the County General Fund or any other fund from which expenses incurred in the maintenance of the county highway may be paid. The county fiscal body, as defined in IC 36126, shall determine the allocation of this interest among the general fund and the various highway funds into which the interest may be deposited." So that to me, and maybe I'm misreading it, tells me that it's the county council's responsibility to determine the allocation of that interest after it comes in.
If you look at that statute a little bit, statute a little bit closer, it is pointing to tax collections that come in before dispersment. In other words, if Dan, in his, in his collection account where he brings in his tax collections when he takes payments, that is referring to in that fund or in those monies that he collects that belongs to everyone else during that period of time before it's distributed, interest earned on that investment would be the county council's.
So where in that statute does it say that, I mean, when I read Section 6A, I don't see, it says it's supposed to go into the general fund. That was the section that you quoted.
Read the, read the whole thing again?
It says, "All interest derived from an investment by a political subdivision or by any other local public officer under the authority granted by Section 3 of this chapter shall be deposited, except as otherwise provided by law, in the general fund of the investment authority or in any other fund in its governing body designated specifically by, specifically or by rule, subject to the modifications and limitations in this section."
So who's the investment authority in your opinion?
I, the investment authority.
The council, the fiscal body.
Is the commissioners with the treasurer. They have the authority to be able to invest, yes.
Yes.
But it doesn't say that, it doesn't say that the investment authority gets to determine, it says that, it says it's supposed to go to the general fund.
Or any other?
Into the general fund of the investment authority, into the general fund of the investment authority, which would be our general fund because the investment authority falls, is you guys, and our general fund is underneath your umbrella. The general fund of the investment authority or in any other fund its governing body designated specifically or by rule. Well, who is the governing body there?
The Board of Finance. The Board of Finance, it's our position that the Board of Finance is the governing body of the investment authority because the investment authority is the Board of Finance, so therefore they would direct where those funds go.
So I guess what concern is, and I am all about capital improvement, I've brought it up a couple of different years in a row, that we need to start looking at something for capital improvement.
Agreed.
And I'm not opposed to taking a great substantial amount of our investments and looking at putting them into a capital improvement fund, but I also don't like the idea that I can't ever even, I mean, that investment is on our general fund and if there might be something that comes up in the county that we feel would be really pertinent to be able to utilize those funds for.
I understand your argument, I just don't agree with it. The investment authority is the Board of Finance and the Board of Finance is making the investments and then the Board of Finance is directing where that interest goes, I think it's in the purview of the investment authority, which just happens to be the commissioners because they are in the Board of Finance.
I'd like to clarify the request of the commissioners, because we have a request for $1.2 million.
Right.
For this Capital Asset Improvement.
Yes.
I appreciate the principle that Vice President Norrak is articulating. It sounds like this is a legal question that is, has yet to be resolved. This is not our area of expertise, but, and I think that's worthy of further discussion. But the issue on the table right now is the request for the Capital Asset Improvement and for this money to go into this fund to be able to address the issue that arise with our facilities and structures that we, or manage, as the case may be. So I'd like to facilitate the conversation around the request. I think we can have another conversation about the interpretation of the law and the use of the investment dollars. That's not what's contained here in this request, as I.
I agree.
So I'd like to attend to the request.
This may be something that would be a good project for our newly designated council. We can put this off a month and at least resolve. How the, I mean, are any of these projects, if we wait a month, Commissioner?
Some could.
I mean, you could start the bidding, I mean.
The bank building, no. And I, I respect the fact that you would ask your new counsel what their analysis is of the law. We've already done that with ours and that's our position and that's where we're going to be, with our counsel here.
I've had plenty of time to review it, I got this afternoon. There's absolutely, it's open for interpretation at this, at this, as your legal counsel for the next 30, 50 minutes, I can probably find a deft hand memo from the new legal counsel.
And I'm with Vice President Norrak and I like the concept because we've gotten head over the head over the past five years, but I can remember out at the Youth Center, I mean, some of the AC units and roofs going out and parking lot and having to come from general fund and as Vice President Norrak and I have been here long enough to know we don't like surprises and having a capital improvement fund, the computers we just had to buy kind of out of excess, but that would be a perfect place to take some of those things out of. Now, do we still have, under this Capital Improvement Fund, we still have to say is where it gets allocated, do we?
You still have appropriate power on that fund, absolutely.
Appropriation out of that fund, correct? And there's no doubt about that. I think some of the, I'm not a legal expert, so I can't say what, it was arm wrestling, but as President pointed out, that we, you know, addressing the fund, if we can put that off and feel a little better about it, or take a vote, we'll see.
I think we've heard the issues from the commissioners related to the services, repairs and maintenance that are needed.
And the funds are in those accounts, in that, in that account now?
There's $295,819, is that the success currently in that fund?
Well, that should get them by for a month.
On which fund?
The Capital Improvement Fund. That, I'm assuming they take what they put, they put the interest from February into that fund, I'm assuming that's it.
And the interest over the next months will also go into that fund, which would fund this whole project. Everything in this project would be funded by that. It's no different from your general fund. When you start out your budget for the year, you set a 45, for goodness sakes, whatever, wherever you end up at the end of the year, a million dollar budget, but you don't have that money when you start. You get that monthly. You get, you get lit money monthly, you get your tax rolls twice a year. Funding this without the cash in the fund, that cash will be in the fund over the same period of time that the general fund gets its funding, it just is coming from a different source. If the bottom dropped out of the market and you drop down to a 2% interest and instead of getting 4.5%, you get 2% or you get 1% or whatever that might be, even though that appropriation is there, you can never spend more, even, you can have a billion dollar appropriation, but if you have a dollar in there, you can spend a dollar. It's just saying that I, I believe in these projects, we may or may not appropriate for these projects, but even if you did and we believed in it all, if the money doesn't come in, those projects can't be done. The, I'm sorry. The Star Bank Building is, is extremely important. I don't want to say too much about the pricing of that because if that goes out for bid, I don't want to give a heads up to the bidders. I mean, it's as simple as that. If I, if I gave a price today, that's what the bid will be, I guarantee you, because people that are looking to bid on county projects look back at your meetings. So when, when we did quotes on that, we'll be happy to share those, but, and until we do that.
So, would it be best now to vote on this and then, we won't be able to, this $1.2 million won't be fulfilled until May, right? Somewhere around that May?
Yeah.
It was, oh, yeah. Would it be best at that time in May, that gives us ample time to talk with our new legal advisors about this topic specifically, that we can readdress that in May and we can continue that conversation in May? Or sooner?
We can deliberate on any motion you make. I think the issue here is, is, are there, is there a capital need in the next month that is, is required or urgent for us to, I mean, are you suggesting there's some kind of issue we need to vote on tonight in order to be able to fund something that otherwise will be created?
I will say this much, a few years ago, the parking garage at the Star Bank Building was looked at and there was some needs then, right? Money wasn't available. The longer it waits, the more repairs you'll have, let me put it that way.
Would it be possible for you to obtain the votes first and then bring that to next month's meeting and then we could appropriate then?
Fair enough.
We, we could do some of that, but the thing, who's going to quote? No, we don't have a mind. It's kind of like the cart before the horse thing, you know? I understand your caution of not wanting to appropriate before you know what it's going to cost, but this is an in-house estimate of what this is going to cost based on past projects. The one, the one we don't know for sure about is the Star Bank Building, but we know it's going to be a big number. And it's very important because that ramp is very important to that garage, it's important to the people who are tenants of ours. And without that parking garage, you really don't have any tenants because you don't have anywhere to park and the building's worth a lot less, including the fact that we have employees, many employees that park over there. So I understand your concerns, at the same time, these things need done, whether that money is sitting in the general fund and we ask for, or if it's sitting over here in a fund that has already been funded and you don't have to touch your general fund, that's the choice you have tonight. I appreciate any consideration.
Is there a motion?
May I make a motion that we table this until next May to consult our new legal counsel?
Counselor Kellam makes a motion to table this issue until next month, so that we can work over this with our new negotiations. Is there a second to that motion?
Counselor Gomrowski?
Is there a discussion about that?
So we're all in agreement that these projects need funding and if we would vote for this tonight, they would get funded and they would move along, however, we're trying to discuss the discrepancy of basically who's in charge. I know it's.
I'm understanding the motion, I'm understanding the motion to mean that this proposal is being tabled for one month. Would that be accurate?
Yes, that would be accurate.
Any other discussion?
In the meantime, if you can get quotes and prioritize, if we have a better, we can, with the money not coming till May, I mean, maybe you have to prioritize things and we can act on it next month.
My thought is, you know, specifically Star Bank, we'll just include the other repairs we need done. So I guess maybe we should consider just doing $600,000 and say, "Hey, here's money to get you started, let's..."
They have $295,000.
Put some in there.
No.
But that gives them some flexibility to get started and moving.
No.
Some jobs, quotes. You said it's a lot easier to get some quotes, people do want to give quotes when you actually have some money, I understand that.
They have $295,000.
Well, there's a motion of second. Any other discussion? Call in favor of the motion of tabling until next month, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose?
No.
Full call?
Counselor two?
Yes.
Counselor call?
No.
Counselor Liken?
No.
Counselor Gomrowski?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
Vice President Nork?
Yes.
President Green?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
We will address that next month. Our public hearing items, we...